I had a small glass of champagne, thinking we were toast and she didn't, but that was our five of the day.
Right.
Rose didn't yell at you, did she? She mad at me? No. Okay, seven. Rose texted me, is John drinking? And I texted her. She goes back to smoking. And what I said, which is not to be back. I don't know. I texted me. All right, so. Here we go. Okay. Seven. Make it just. Is that like for court?
Yes.
Okay.
I'd like to call the city council, the city caucus meeting to order for Monday, April 24th, 2023. We have three public hearings this evening. If the clerk could please read.
Public hearing number one, abandonment of a portion of Amelia Street.
Public hearing number two?
Public hearing number two, abandonment of a portion of Larch Street.
And public hearing number three?
Public hearing number three, amending section 248-18 of the Schenectady City Code to designate Fuller Street from South Church Street to South Ferry Street a one-way street.
We have nine items for original consideration. If the clerk would please read item number one.
Item number one for final consideration, an ordinance to enact chapter 265 of the Code of the City of Schenectady.
Discuss in committee without objection on consent. Item number two.
Item number two for original consideration, a resolution amending the 2022-2023 HUD Annual Action Plan to reallocate funds from the paving line item to the parks improvement line item.
Discuss in committee without objection on consent. Item number three.
Item number three for original consideration, a resolution authorized in the city to enter into agreement with New York State Division of Criminal Justice to secure, give, grant funding for the non-fatal shooting initiative.
Discuss in committee without objection and on consent. Item number four.
Item number four for original consideration, a resolution allocating 36,600 of CDBG funds to the 2023 Tree Planting Collaborative and authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Community Fathers Incorporated to manage the program.
Discuss in committee without objection on consent. Item number five.
Item number five for original consideration, a resolution recognizing Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month.
This item will be taken out of order and presented by Councilmember Williams. Item number six.
Item number six for original consideration, a resolution recognizing Justin R. Chairs.
This item also will be taken out of order and, um, oh, I'm sorry. Yes. And also, and also by Councilmember Williams. Item number seven.
Item number seven for original consideration, a resolution recognizing Judge Robert Hoffman.
This item will be taken out of order and it would my pleasure to be able to present this resolution. Item number eight.
Item number eight for original consideration, a resolution recognizing Jai Brown.
This item will be taken out of consideration, out of order and presented by Councilmember Farley. Item number nine.
Item number nine under contract and supply, a resolution awarding the bid and contract for improvement to Hillhurst and Fairview Parks Base Bid and Add Alternate Number Two to Carver Construction Incorporated in the amount of $436,395.
Discuss in committee without objection on consent. If there's nothing more to come before the city council caucus, I ask for a motion to adjourn. Move by Ms. Patrick, second by Mr. Williams. All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. I'd like to call the ordered city council meeting for Monday, April 24th, 2023. And I'd like to call on Reverend Conneke for the prayer and invocation.
Heavenly Father, your commandment is to love. Granted in carrying out our duties and obligations, we may hold love before all else. May our commitment to the common good be a reflection of that love. May our personal convictions never outpace, obscure, or run over the dignity of our neighbor. Give us your abundant blessings this evening and always. Amen. My dear brothers and sisters, we'd like to take a moment of silence in honor of Bill Masucci, who hurled Schenectady Little League into the 1954 Little League World Series. In 2004, Mr. Masucci was inducted into the Schenectady City School District Athletic Hall of Fame, and he passed very recently. So a moment of silence, please. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to call on Greg Hoffman to lead us in the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. If the clerk could please complete the roll call.
Mr. Mutiveren?
Present.
Ms. D' Toro?
Here.
Mr. Farley?
Here.
Mr. Williams?
Here.
Ms. Patrick?
Here.
Mr. Palamini?
Here.
Ms. Porterfield?
Present. At this time, we'd like to present the resolution to Judge Robert Hoffman, and I would ask Good evening. May I have the floor?
Yes, you have the floor.
Councilman, Council Majority Leader Mutiveren to please assume the chair. Thank you. I'd like to offer this resolution recognizing the Honorable Robert Hoffman and his service I'd like to invite Judge Hoffman and his family to join me behind the rail. as city court judge. Whereas Honorable Robert Hoffman was raised in Schenectady and graduated from Bishop Gibbons High School in 1970, he married his high school sweetheart, Catherine Woods, a graduate of Schenectady's Linton. And whereas Judge Hoffman returned to Schenectady in 1979 after completing college at Niagara University and law school at Stetson University College of Law in Florida. And whereas Judge Hoffman began his legal career in Schenectady, working for three law firms before opening the Hoffman Law Firm in 1992, which became Hoffman and Noweski? Close enough? Okay. PLLC in 2007. He developed a successful practice specializing in what he called happy law, focusing on real estate and real estate planning for over 15 years. And whereas Judge Hoffman, a respected member of the local legal community, served as president of the Schenectady County Bar Association, was the recipient of the Lawyer in Service to the Community Award in 2013. And whereas Judge Hoffman served on the Schenectady County Legislature from 2011 to 2014, where he was involved in the creation of and served as chairperson for the Schenectady County Land Bank before his election to the Schenectady City Court, which he took, when he took the bench in 2015. And whereas as a Schenectady City Court Judge, the Honorable Robert Hoffman served fairly and compassionately to all parties who appeared before him. He is very proud of his work in the alternative treatment program, and even returned to city court last week to witnessing announced completion of the program by a person who he diverted, who he diverted to the alternative program. And whereas away from judicial duties, Judge Hoffman was known to many in the city as coach, due to his longtime involvement in youth sports in the city, having coached many children, all of his, all three of his sons in the Schenectady Basketball Club he co-founded. Partners from the Schenectady Basketball Club, teams he coached went on to become the backbone of Schenectady High School's 1998 and 20, in 2001 state championship teams. And whereas Judge Hoffman has always had a love for the outdoors, in 1993, he completed all 46 of the Adirondack High Peaks with his family. Congratulations. His pursuit continues as he nears completion of the Northeast 111. In addition, Judge Hoffman was instrumental in founding the not-for-profit Schenectady Disc Golf Club from now Discap, bringing disc golf to Schenectady Central Park and fostering the growth of the sport in the Capitol District. And whereas Judge Hoffman is also a sports fanatic, as many city court staff can attest, Judge Hoffman is especially passionate about basketball and baseball, particularly for the Yankees. If asked, he would certainly provide an update on how all of his fantasy sports teams were performing. And whereas of all Judge Hoffman's great achievements, none stand greater than his family. He is the proud grandfather of seven, five granddaughters and two grandsons, and he will spend his well-earned retirement enjoying watching them pursue and achieve their goals. Now therefore be resolved that the mayor, Gary R. McCarthy, and the Schenectady City Council do hereby pause in our deliberations to honor and to celebrate the Honorable Judge Robert Hoffman for the compassion, dedication, and care for the city of Schenectady that he has demonstrated over the past 40 years, as a valued fixture in the city of Schenectady as an attorney, a coach, a legislator, and a judge. I'd like to move the resolution.
May I have a second? All in favor? Aye. Congratulations, resolution is passed.
Okay, wow, that was all in there. Well, being a judge for the city was probably the crowning glory for my career. I couldn't have thought of a better way for me to combine everything that I had done and serve the city. So it was, it was a great honor. I miss it. I miss the people. Don't miss some of the stuff, but you know, what goes on in this building every day is important, and we took it to heart. And you know, we love everybody in the city. We love everybody who came from out of the city, the county, and you know, the city court staff is wonderful. A lot of people work with them every day. You know, you know, what goes on here. And they were so great. You know, when I was in private practice, I had one or two employees. Here I had 32 people and I never got a phone call. So that was a pretty good, pretty good career. I was pretty well protected, and it was just my honor and a real pleasure. And the only thing that wasn't in here was that when I was in college and during the summers, I was, worked for the city of Schenectady on the garbage truck. So this is kind of a fitting circle comes around as I finished my career in the city as well. So Marion, thank you so much. Thank you for the kind words, whoever wrote this. I have a suspicion who had their hand in this, but I appreciate the accolades. I appreciate everything that we do. We do for the city and for our family. Thank you.
Thank you for your service. The next resolution is for recognizing Justin Chairs.
At this time, I'd like to invite Justin Chairs and his family up to the podium. May I have the floor?
You may.
At this time, I have the honor of presenting a resolution recognizing Justin R. Chairs. Whereas Justin R. Chairs was born September 22nd, 1990 in Schenectady, New York as one of five children to John Senior and Desiree Chairs. He was raised in Schenectady, New York, where he graduated from Schenectady High School, Hudson Valley Community College with an associate's degree, Hartwick College with a bachelor of arts degree, and Grand Canyon University with a master's degree. And whereas Justin is a member of the Eastern Parkway United Methodist Church, formerly sat on the Commission for Religion and Race Team Leader Youth Group, New York Conference UMC Youth Leader of the Al Tabari Court Number 28 Youth Group, mentor of the Albany Reading Program, volunteered at the Sicum Lunch, Summer Lunch Youth Program, and coached Schenectady Youth Basketball and Belmont Pop Warner. And whereas currently, Justin is the illustrious potentate of Al Tabari Temple Number 121, located in Albany, New York, whose membership consists of residents from Albany, Schenectady, and Troy. The Al Tabari Temple is part of the ancient Egyptian Arabic Order Nobles Mystic Shrine of North and South America and its jurisdictions, which is primarily a benevolent, charitable, and fraternal organization. Its membership is dedicated to the principle of fostering civic, economic, and educational development programs throughout the world. Senior Warden of Tuscan Lounge Number 85, Schenectady, New York. And whereas Justin is an educator throughout the Capitol District, currently working in Niskiuna School District, and previously worked as a union representative of school-related professionals through NISIT. Justin is the loving son and brother, father of an amazing four-year-old, and stepfather to three young adults and a law-abiding citizen. He received a unanimous vote to now sit on the New York State Board of Directors for Citizens Actions in New York, vice president of the NAACP, Chair of Public Safety, and forever advocate of young students and their families, was a dedicated young member of Albany Street United Methodist Church. He is a confirmed Catholic at the Sacred Heart Saint Columbus, Saint Anthony. And whereas as a community mentor, teacher, and small business operator, Justin continues to be a leader and role model for our use. Now therefore be resolved that the Schenectady City Council and Mayor Gary R. McCarthy do hereby pause in their deliberations to recognize Justin R. Chairs' continued contributions and dedicated service to our community, the shrindom, and Prince Hall Freemasonry.
May I have the floor?
You may.
At this time, I have the honor of presenting a resolution recognizing Justin R. Chairs. Whereas Justin R. Chairs was born September 22nd, 1990, in Schenectady, New York, as one of five children to John Senior and Desiree Chairs. He was raised in Schenectady, New York, where he graduated from Schenectady High School, Hudson Valley Community College with an associate's degree, Hartwick College with a Bachelor of Arts degree, and Grand Canyon University with a Master's degree. And whereas Justin is a member of the Eastern Parkway United Methodist Church, formerly sat on the Commission for Religion and Race Team Leader Youth Group, New York Conference U M C Youth Leader of the Altobari Court Number 28 Youth Group, mentor of the Albany Reading Program, volunteer at the Sycam Lunch, Summer Lunch Youth Program, and coached Schenectady Youth Basketball and Belmont Pop Warner. And whereas currently, Justin is the illustrious potentate of Altobari Temple Number 121, located in Albany, New York, whose membership consists of residents from Albany, Schenectady, and Troy. The Altobari Temple is part of the ancient Egyptian Arabic Order Nobles Mystic Shrine of North and South America and its jurisdictions, which is primarily a benevolent, charitable, and fraternal organization. Its membership is dedicated to the principle of fostering civic, economic, and educational development programs throughout the world. Senior Warden of Tuscan Lounge Number 85, Schenectady, New York. And whereas Justin is an educator throughout the Capitol District, currently working in Niskiuna School District, and previously worked as a union representative of school-related professionals through NISIT. Justin is the loving son and brother, father of an amazing four-year-old, and stepfather to three young adults, and a law-abiding citizen. He received a unanimous vote to now sit on the New York State Board of Directors for Citizens Actions in New York, Vice President of the N W A C P, Chair of Public Safety, and forever advocate of young students and their families, was a dedicated young member of Albany Street United Methodist Church. He is a confirmed Catholic at the Sacred Heart, Saint Columbus, Saint Anthony. And whereas as a community mentor, teacher, and small business operator, Justin continues to be a leader and role model for our use. Now therefore be it resolved that the Schenectady City Council and Mayor Gary R. McCarthy do hereby pause in their deliberations to recognize Justin R. Chairs' continued contributions and dedicated service to our community, the Shrindom, and Prince Hall Freemasonry. I'd like to move this resolution.
May I have a second? Second by Mr. Mutavaren. All those in favor? Aye. Congratulations.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it. Mr. Williams, bring it forward and present this to me. It means a lot to me. I did a lot so far, I think. I don't know. I've got a lot more work to do, though. But I appreciate the opportunity to continue to do good work in our community. You know, I always ask that people continue to push me forward and that my church family continues to pray for me. So I have the strength to do the good work that I have. So it's been a blessing to be able to be the youngest illustrious potentate in northeast right now and continue to push forward with the charitable work we have. This year, we're sponsoring the Youth Auxiliary to go down for competition in Tampa and then Louisiana next year, as well as supporting a young man who was in a recent accident out in Troy. My charitable ball went to donating some to his medical funds as he recovers now at Albany Med. So there's just so much that I want to continue to do. I want to continue to represent our elders and my veterans and my children to the best of my ability. I will promise I'll always be an advocate. But I just want to take a moment to give a special thank you to, first off, our wonderful Congressman Paul Taco, who is just an outstanding man, holds, you know, no ill will towards anyone ever, no matter what, and shows his true character always. He was able to make it to my event, give me a proclamation from the United States Congress on behalf, and said some wonderful words about me, which just shows what kind of person he is through our history of those that know. And I also want to give a big thank you to our Madam President, who came with wonderful words for me. You know, I was mildly discouraged. Our mayor wasn't going to be able to make it. And I know, you know, our council's running around. I know Madam President is running like crazy. And she walked through the door with a big smile, amazing hug for me, told me how proud she was of me, as she always does for so many in our community. And it just, it helped make my night. So I want to thank you, Madam President, for showing up for this, you know, historic moment in my life and the career for Shrindom. So thank you so much. And as always, thank you, Mr. Williams, for once again presenting this to me. I appreciate you, sir.
Thank you. Our next out-of-order resolution will be a resolution recognizing Asian American Heritage Month. So those that are here to receive a resolution, please come forward. And I would ask Councilmember Williams to present this resolution. Come on over.
May I have the floor?
You may, sir.
Tonight, I have the privilege of presenting the resolution recognizing Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. Whereas Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month takes place in the United States each May and was permanently designated AAPI Heritage Month in 1992. And whereas the month of May was chosen for AAPI Heritage Month because it commemorates the immigration of the first Japanese people to the United States on May 7th, 1843. And whereas the 2023 national theme for the observance of Asian American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander Heritage Month is Advancing Leaders Through Opportunity. This year's theme is a continuation of the Advancing Leaders Theme Series, which began in 2021. And whereas opportunity is defined as a set of circumstances that make it possible to do something. Opportunity can be built, it can be assessed, it can be achieved, or it can be given. It has been the foundation of our great nation, and thus America is known to be the land of opportunity. Each year, thousands of immigrants from all over the world come to the United States to gain access to these opportunities. No matter who you are, capable ones must lend a hand to those in need and provide an opportunity for them to advance as well. And whereas the Asian Pacific Islander American Public Affairs Association, which has a Capitol Region chapter, is a not-for-profit organization with over 40 chapters across the nation. The mission of the organization is to advance Asian Pacific Islander communities through increased leadership and civic engagement. Representing one of the fastest-growing populations in the United States, A P A P A collaborates with other diverse organizations, public officials, and community leaders to create awareness and support the fight hate crimes, address systemic racism, and provide opportunities for our collective voices to be heard. And whereas during Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month, we proudly celebrate Asians and Pacific Islanders in the United States and pay tribute to the generations who have enriched and strengthened our nation. The U.S. is home to millions of Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders, representing a diverse array of cultures and traditions. Now therefore be it resolved that the Schenectady City Council and Mayor Gary R. McCarthy do hereby pause in their deliberations to recognize Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month and celebrate the unique journey for all AAPI immigrants and citizens in the United States and their unique life experiences, traditions, cultures, and contributions to the local community and our country. I'd like to move the resolution.
I'd like a second, please. Second by Mr. Mutavaren. All those in favor? Aye. Congratulations.
Well, thank you. Thank you to the City Council and Madam President for recognizing the API Month. And John Muthwir, our long-term friend, John over there, thank you all. So as a growing community, as you rightly said, we are the fastest-growing community, and we feel this comes with a lot of responsibility as well, not just growing in numbers, but growing with some responsibility. We are empowering our Asian communities through these 40 chapters, and especially in the Capitol Region with civic engagement. And most of our new immigrants doesn't know how the system works in the country. So we are trying to engage them into the voting system as they become the citizens. And you know, that's one of our foremost things to kind of become, you know, get them to become a voter and then participate in the system. So as we have a flagship program, we engage our youth, the college graduates or the high school graduates into summer internship program. And some of our proud interns work for state and city as permanent employees now. So over the years, we have achieved, you know, probably 50 to 60 of these, in the last five years, they've got their permanent jobs. So that gives us satisfaction. And thanks to all our leaders from various communities, you know, we have the representation from Indian, Pakistani, Chinese, Korean, Afghani, and Indo-Caribbean, Japanese, and, you know, 15 countries in the Capitol Region. But we are growing, and thank you all for your support. If there is anything the Asian community can do in the city or in the county, we're all here. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so tonight's the night of celebrations. We have one more ceremonial resolution, a resolution recognizing Jai Brown. And I'd like to call on Councilmember Farley to present the resolution.
Thank you. Come on up. Madam President, may I have the floor?
You have the floor, sir.
Okay. Let's get ready to rumble. I'm joking. Okay. So I have the honor to present Mr. Jai Brown with this resolution. Whereas the city of Schenectady takes pride in its residents who exhibit outstanding achievements and serve as ambassadors of goodwill for our city. And whereas Jai Brown, a young boxer and talent from Schenectady, has achieved great success in his sport with a record of 13 and 1. He's fought in Madison Square Garden and was recently featured in Showtime Showbox. And whereas Jai Brown has not only excelled in the ring, but has also demonstrated a positive attitude, a strong character that have earned him the respect and admiration of the community. And whereas Jai Brown has become a goodwill ambassador for the city of Schenectady, representing our community with pride, distinction in his travels and interactions with other boxers and boxing fans. Now therefore be resolved that the City Council and Mayor Gary R. McCarthy do hereby pause in their deliberations to recognize and commend Jai Brown for his outstanding boxing record, his appearances, his prestigious venues such as Madison Square Garden, Showtime Showbox, and his contributions as a goodwill ambassador of our city and outstanding community member. I wanted to say that Jai Brown represents the resilience and the fighting heart that it takes to be somebody and stand up and for the city. And I'm just always, always, you know, want to just show our dedication, our appreciation for your dedication. You embody the spirit of those who come before us. We stand on the shoulders of giants. They didn't always know if they were going to win the fights, but they always went in there and fought for people such as you and I in our larger community. So I'm extremely grateful for you, young man. So with that, I'd like to hand this to you.
Move the resolution.
I would like to move the resolution.
May I have a second, please? Second by Ms. Patrick. All those in favor? Congratulations. Motion passed.
I just want to thank you. I want to thank the whole city, everybody who came today. I want to thank you guys. I've been through a lot. And it's not about just standing on the ground. It's about how you get up, how you come back. And I'm ready to come back stronger. And I'm ready to put on for Schenectady. And I just want to show everybody, including the kids, that if you put the work in, anything's possible. I just want to thank God again.
Thank you. Okay, so now we have three public hearings this evening. And remind you that we've extended the public hearing comment to four minutes. And I also respectfully ask that any person that wishes to speak on the public comment period, during the public comment period, only speak to the subject relevant to the public hearing. Public hearing number one, abandonment of Amelia Street. I have no one signed up, so I would declare that public hearing closed. Public hearing number two, abandonment of a portion of Large Street. I have no one signed up to speak, so I declare that hearing closed. Public hearing number three, amending Section 248-18 of the Schenectady City Code to designate Fuller Street from South Church Street to South Ferry Street, a one-way street. I have no one signed up to speak, so I declare that public hearing closed. I'd ask for approval of the minutes from April 10th, 2023. Move by Mr. Williams. Second by Mr. Farley. All those in favor? Aye. If the clerk would please read any communications and petitions.
Communications presented to City Council from Monday, April 24th, 2023. Under official, there were none. Under general, from P D. Boris, an email addressing the difficulties she's faced with a court decision to evict her from her apartment. And under petitions, there were none.
Thank you. I'd like to call on council members to provide any committee reports. Saying none. At this time, we will offer privilege of the floor related to the legislative agenda. I have no one signed up to speak, so I declare... And your name is, sir? Okay, you were signed up under city business. This is the legislative agenda. Anything that's on the agenda, that's printed, is what I'm calling on right now. There will be one more opportunity, and that's where you've signed up. Yes, and your opportunity will come. This is regarding the legislative agenda that's printed that's here. And these are the topics that people have the opportunity to speak on at this moment. So I have no one signed up to speak, so I would declare the public comment on the legislative agenda closed. Ask for approval of the legislative consent agenda. Motion by Ms. Patrick. Second by Mr. Mutavaren. All in favor? At this time, we have privilege of the floor regarding general city business. And I have four people who are signed up to speak. The first person is Laven Jr., Edmund Laven Jr.?
Good evening, Chairwoman Porterfield, Mayor McCarthy, council members. Chairwoman Porterfield, I owe you an apology for the way I spoke to you at the last council meeting. I'm sorry. I was not aware that this was like a court and there cannot be a dialogue. After the meeting, last meeting, Tuesday, I called the mayor's office, sent an email requesting a meeting. Thursday, I called again. Friday, I went in person. Secretary said mayor is not responsible for judges. Judge who works for the unified court system is not on the mayor's payroll. Mayor was responsible for the false arrest of Daniel, the man that did the video of me on YouTube New York State Audit. Daniel was harassed by a court guard, and then office was closed to him when he went to file for an intention to sue. Daniel was falsely arrested for knocking on Plexiglas. This was during working hours. Daniel is also not employed by the mayor. The mayor is going to do nothing about my complaint, even though a federal law has been broken, and is unconcerned about the three corrupt judges working in City Hall. I am claiming that three judges in the court clerk's office, under orders from the judges, conspiracy to deprive me of my civil rights to due process in a fair hearing. I'm giving you proof. The case number is SC 002-853-19/SC. All of you, I'm sure, have access to court files. This is a color of law violation. I want Falatiko Frost and Hoffman charged with conspiracy to deprive me of my civil rights to due process in a fair hearing. I was pulled into court with no affidavit of service. No judge can act on any motion without affidavit of service. I called the clerk's office. They asked what the name was, not the court case number. Falatiko never expected me to come to court and was going to give her a default judgment. I did come to court. He vacated my judgment the same day, 9:10, 11 days before the hearing. She can't get back in court without having a reason, a valid reason she didn't appear for the first hearing. None was asked of her. None was given. I believe Mr. Hoffman, Judge Hoffman, vacated either my first or second motion to reinstate my default judgment. So there's a conspiracy between three judges in the city clerk's office. The city clerk's office was told what to do. I just want to read civil rights laws. Taking away the person's right of due process and unreasonable seizure. In case of deprivation of property, the color of law statute would be violated by unlawfully obtaining or maintaining a person's property, which oversteps or misapplies the official's authority. Summary judgment. Opportunity to have a trial and should not be subjected to punishment without having been afforded the opportunity of the legal process.
I'm going to have to ask you to summarize because your time has expired. I'm going to have to ask you to summarize because your time is up.
I just wanted to say, everyone here on the council, deprivation of rights under color of law. This statute makes it a crime for any person acting under color of law, statute, ordinance, regulation, or custom to willfully deprive or cause to be deprived from any person those rights, privileges, or immunities secured, protected by the Constitution and laws of the United States. Acts under color of law.
Sir?
Order for unlawful acts...
You have to summarize. We really, your time is over. I've extended the time.
I got two sentences.
Two sentences. That's it. Go ahead.
Unlawful acts must be done while such official is purporting or pretending to act in a performance of his or her official duties. This definition includes, in addition to law enforcement officials, individuals such as mayors, council persons, judges.
Thank you.
You're all responsible for turning these judges in. I'll be here tomorrow to put my intent to sue.
Thank you. You forgot your sign. You're welcome. Mary McLean?
Good evening. Tonight, I want to address an issue that I have mentioned on many occasions while attending... council meetings over the past forty years. The issue is as relevant today as it was in the past, and the issue is litter. Schenectady is a dirty city. Neither the mayor or the previous city officials made cleanliness a priority. To my knowledge, sweeping litter from the city streets isn't even a line item in the sanitation workers' union contract. Furthermore, businesses are encouraged to open shop in the city, and they are not obligated to keep their properties clean. On April 1st, a friend drove me to church for the four o'clock mass at St. John the Evangelist. We went by way of Albany Street. The street was filthy. It was filthy last year. It was filthy in 2011 when the present council president won her first city council seat. From what I have been reading in the newspapers, litter, a litter-free city is not a priority for the new city council members. They run with a chip on their shoulders and a personal agenda, and if you can't stand the heat, get out of the kitchen. I also read that there was a renaissance in Schenectady. How so? And something about a new Schenectady. Where? I suggest council members bend over and pick up cigarette butts off the city streets like I used to do. It's good for the waistline, it's good for the city. Folks, you can't go to the ball with a dirty face. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Tracy Collins. I live on the corner of Queen Philomena Boulevard and Kings Road in the city. My house was built in 2006 by the company I worked for. It was as a rental. I was the property manager there until 2019, when my wife and I bought the house. We have had our trees destroyed, our fence has been damaged multiple times, our sprinkler system's been damaged, our siding has been damaged, our gas meter has been hit by flying debris, prompted National Grid to investigate. Our house could have been blown up. This is caused by speeding vehicles up and down Kings Road. Excuse me. Kings Road, you can take directly to Colony without having to take Stage Street, which has traffic lights, and to Rotterdam without going on Route 7, which has traffic lights. Going up and down Kings Road, you can go as fast as you want. The city police department, mayor's office, has informed us there's nothing they can, not enough enforcement they can do to monitor the speed. They're speeding in all the city. How many houses have been damaged seven times involving a truck being damaged in my driveway by speeding on Kings Road? There are multiple children, seniors, staff from Kingsway Community and Nursing Home that walk the neighborhood every day. The seniors are sometimes pushed in wheelchairs and walkers by aides. We are asking for stop signs on Kings Road to slow this traffic down. I will use Council Road as an example between Route 7 and Balltown Road. Since we have been told that there will be no enforcement of the speed limit, we are asking for stop signs. Stop signs, we need to slow the traffic down. March 16th, 2023, at 3:46 a.m. was the latest our house, our property was damaged by a coward, and yes, I'll say a coward, who ran from the scene but left his vehicle behind. Please get copies of the accident report, there are two of them, and come to see our property. We have done everything we can to protect our family and ourselves. This is not enough. We need stop signs on Kings Road. Please help us. Thank you.
Thank you. Kevin Brown?
My name's Kevin Brown. I live across the street from my neighbor, my friend Tracy. He and I share the same concern. My wife and I have been in our house on the corner of Queen Philomena and Kings for twenty-seven years. Used to be a quiet street, hardly any traffic. I'd say in the past year and a half, two years, I've seen more traffic accidents and more near misses than makes me comfortable. I implore you, as Tracy had, we need some help up there, you know? As Tracy mentioned, you know, the police said they can't do a lot, they can't enforce these issues. That concerns me. Our concern is what is it going to take to get somebody's attention? A fatality? My own son and granddaughter almost got run over in front of my own house. This was less than a month ago. This really concerns me, so I implore you, I'm asking you, please get us some help up there, get us some stop sign, please enforce, get the police to enforce the traffic rules up there, because it's getting a little out of hand, so that's what I wanted to say. Thank you.
My understanding, there's a gentleman here who didn't know about signing the paper in a blue shirt that wanted to speak, so if you could come forward and please tell us your name. You have three minutes.
Yeah, this is first time coming here, so I apologize.
Okay, and your name is?
My name is Robert Witowski. I'm the son of Charlene Peak. I'm representing her and my neighbor, James Turley.
Go ahead.
This involves the Amelia Paper Street. I grew up in the neighborhood. I was born in 1970, so I've been in Schenectady most of my life. My mom lived in the home that is right on the Paper Street. She was raised there, she still is there, she's in her seventies. They moved in around 1953. My grandfather worked with the city on maintaining the Amelia Paper Street with clearing the trees, bringing in dirt, putting down grass seed, doing a lot of, you know, yard maintenance. And my mother and my uncles and my aunts were taking care of the yard for many years, and then we took over the yard and were maintaining it for the many years. My mom wrote a letter to the city. I'd like to read it, and it says that I have lived in this house since 1953. I was three when my family moved in. Back then, the lot next to my house had many trees on it. My dad asked the city about the lot and trees. They told my dad they were going to build a road and cut the trees down. My dad, my grandfather, helped the city take the trees down, but they never built a road. So my dad started mowing and fertilizing the yard, and I remember bringing a little girl, and my dad would be putting my hands on the push lawnmower we had, and we would push it with me hanging on, I guess, that's what she said. When my parents divorced in 1958, us kids mowed the lawn and kept it up. One by one, my siblings left and my mother moved in with my brother. So I was left to take over the house and also the lot. I never stopped. We are talking about sixty-seven years that we have been dealing with this Paper Street. The city plows come by and they leave this big pile of snow because the city goes up Amelia Street and Rotterdam goes up Amelia Street, so there's this big pile of snow every year for seventy years in front of that driveway. Just last winter, I snowblowed it out. We've been maintaining that yard for many years. In essence, we feel like that's been our yard, right? But it's been the city yard, right? We played basketball and baseball there with all the kids in the neighborhood, and it would have been nice if the city developed this Paper Street and we had the garage that was situated in such a way to have access to the Paper Street, but it never happened. We have a neighbor in the back, James Turley, who moved in, and he started bringing his boat through the Paper Street and putting ruts in the yard, and my mom was really upset with him and told him. He came over and gave her flowers and apologized and spent thousands of dollars to take down a tree so that he can bring his boat out the other way. We have other neighbors that aren't so considerate of the yard and are still putting ruts in it, so I asked that, you know, we close the Paper Street and we let the neighbors buy those parcels. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, so I have no one else signed up to speak, so I declare the public comment for city business closed. At this time, I ask for Ms. Lady's business of the council. Councilmember Williams.
As always, I'd like to thank everyone that came out and spoke. It's definitely your opportunity to vocalize your concerns to us as a council and to the mayor, mayor's office as well. I'd like to get into my announcements. So at first, would like to say we received an announcement from the Office of Cannabis Management letting us know that as recent regulation changes with regards to the cannabis industry throughout the New York State have changed, they are asking us to promote some of their educational material as to why you should buy legal, and it's definitely their way of discussing and identifying additional benefits to buying regulated cannabis products. So there's recently opening of dispensaries throughout New York State. If you would like more information about this campaign, the Why Buy Legal New York campaign, please visit their department website on New York State. Second, we talk about transparency, and a lot of that is just giving access to information, which is why I'd like to identify that the Schenectady County Sheriff's Department is now recruiting candidates for an upcoming correctional officer exam. The salary is between $41,000 and $63,000, and your applying deadline is May 8th, 2023, and the exam date to test is June 24th, 2023. The requirement for this job opportunity is only having a high school diploma or GED, and you must pass a fitness test as well as having a valid New York State driver's license. If you need more information about this, please, I would recommend either going down or looking online, or you can actually send me an email to provide you more information on that as well. An additional job opportunity is the Schenectady Job Training Agency and Career Center is now hiring job coaches for the Summer Youth Employment Program. If interested, please email your resume to schenectady@dfastate.ny.us. And then my last announcement is we received a notice from one of our local community activists saying that with the passing of our local law amending the vaping, the inclusion of vaping and cannabis use in the smoke-free and vape-free of city parks, you doing this and identifying that promoting health and wellness in these recreational areas is important, and that as we all enjoy the outdoors with the warming of the weather, please do so with the understanding that it is a shared space. That is all my announcements. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Patrick?
Hello, everyone. I'd like to first say that I just wanted to thank all the volunteers throughout the city that came out on Saturday, Earth Day, to do various neighborhood cleanups. You know, it was really fantastic to see so many people out, and especially a lot of young people that came out to help the volunteers. Along the lines of sustainability, I also am thrilled that the sixty-two electric golf carts that we approved are at the golf course. The golf course is off and running, and so I hope that folks will enjoy those carts and our beautiful golf course for the rest of the season. I want to congratulate the folks that are going to be honored Wednesday evening this week for the Schenectady City School District's Educational Foundation Dinner, including, I have to say, I have to put in a plug for our Rotary President. Nick Clay is one of the folks that's getting one of those awards along with other folks, and so congratulations to them all. I wanted to announce that the Friends of the Schenectady County Public Library's Spring Book Sale is May 6th and 7th. You can get great deals on all sorts of books, and especially the children's books are just fantastic deals, so I hope folks will come out for that, and I think they still need some volunteers as well. And then finally, I wanted to thank the folks that put together our Fair Housing Luncheon, which was April 14th. It was just an amazing event where there were educational opportunities for realtors and developers and, you know, advocates from the nonprofit organizations that work on fair housing to come together and learn together. It was just a great day, so just wanted to show my appreciation for that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, no one else? The mayor is not with us tonight, so I want to thank everyone for coming out tonight to voicing whatever your concerns are, and we always want to hear what our public is thinking about. We had some celebrations tonight, and we heard some things about things we need to do better, so it's good to have a balance, and Ms. Patrick just talked about a lot of things that have happened throughout the city that we have to celebrate. And I also want to congratulate the YWCA and Pallet for their opening of their Stride program there at 508 State Street. I went to the opening, it was very nice, and the women that will be served there are just really excited about the opportunity to be empowered, and to what's near and dear to my heart is that they also have a clothing closet there, so the women can be prepared to go out to work once they get the training that they're going through. And also, there's a group called Mission Accomplished, I want to congratulate them as well for just graduating a cohort of students who will be going on to college and they're operating out of the seat center. So our young people are doing things in Schenectady, so I just want to congratulate them all. And so once again, thank you all for coming out tonight, and thank you council members. At this time, I'd ask for a motion to adjourn. All those in favor? Aye. We're adjourned. Thank you, have a good night.[1787.88][1787.88](APPLAUSE). Ms. Patrick?
Good evening. My name is Tracy Collins. I live across the street from my neighbor, my friend Tracy. He and I share the same concern. My wife and I have been in our house on the corner of Queen Philomena and Kings for twenty-seven years. Used to be a quiet street, hardly any traffic. I'd say in the past year and a half, two years, I've seen more traffic accidents and more near misses than makes me comfortable. I implore you, as Tracy had, we need some help up there, you know? As Tracy mentioned, you know, the police said they can't do a lot, they can't enforce